You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the July 15th meeting for the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Michigan City Common Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 15th, 2025. I would ask that you will all please silence all of your electronic devices and please join us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
We're with allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our agenda for this evening, I would like to make a motion to sus- to suspend, to change the agenda, to move public comments from the end of the meeting to if we can put it under, after this Finance Committee meeting.
Support.
We have a, have a mo- uh, motion by, oh, excuse me, forgive me, Colter, Councilman Colter and Councilman, second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk on the vote, please. Oh, my apologies. If I could recant that and do the roll call next. Madam Clerk on the roll call first.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Colter?
Present.
Mr. Dabney? Dr. Cora? Ms. Lee?
Present.
Ms. Moldenauer? Mr. Allison?
Present.
Mr. Priszbalinski?
Present.
And Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have six present and three absent.
Dr. Cora, Councilman, Dr. Cora, Councilwoman Moldenauer and Councilman Dabney, absences have all been approved and I was informed of their absences for this evening. We, I would now like to request a motion to suspend the agenda and move public comments from the end of the agenda and to have public comments heard after the Finance Committee meeting report. May I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Colter and a second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Priszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
And Mr. Colter?
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
And motion carries. Public comments will be heard after the Finance Committee meeting report. Next on our agenda, reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees?
Madam President?
On the order, thank you.
Yeah, we have to do the approval of the minutes.
Uh, yes. Approve of the minutes for the regular council hybrid Zoom July 1st, 2025, executive session July 9th of 2025.
Motion to approve? Support.
Have a motion by Councilman Priszbalinski and a second by Councilman Colter. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Priszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Colter?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees? Any reports of standing committees? Councilman Priszbalinski?
No.
Oh, okay. There are no reports. Our Finance Committee meeting did meet on this evening at 6:00 PM. We did have a quorum with the absence of Dr. Cora. The Michigan City Riverboat Boy Claims Docket for July 15th, 2025, Riverboat Fund 2235, $0. Riverboat EFT Fund 2235, $0. Rainy Day Fund 2236, $15,912.50. Boyd Development Fund 2504, $34,000. Total claims, $49,912.50. The $15,912.50, that is for Schneider and Geometrics. And the $34,000 is for the lavish, beautiful 4th of July fireworks that we all was able to enjoy. May I entertain a motion to accept the claims docket?
Motion to approve? Support.
A motion by Councilman Priszbalinski and a second by Councilman Beatrice. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Mr. Priszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrice?
Aye.
Mr. Colter?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee? And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
The City of Michigan City 2025 Riverboat Rainy Day Fund Statement of Cash Position, fiscal year to date, July 15th, 2025. Five fund type 12, 2235, Riverboat Fund Ending Balance, Fund type 2236, Rainy Day Fund Ending Balance, Bringing a grand total ending balance of $5,42,882.75. Next, I would like to open up public comments at this time. Please keep in mind, public comments are for three minutes. They are comments and not a Q and A. And if you will please state your name and your address, please.
Oh, yes, this is Tommy Kalovic, 1360 Ohio Street. First, I want to wish all the goodwill wishes in the world to Councilman Brian Dabney. He's not here because he told us he had to have hip replacement surgery today. So I hope he's gonna pull through on that. I know he had to be walking around with a crush for the last month, though. Just want to make a quick published service announcement. The Michigan City Fire Department is hiring again. The application deadline is August 11th. They're now hiring firefighters. Paid vacation, training, and sick leave, health, dental, disability. Starting pay is $61,070 for their probationary firefighter. They gotta become an EMT after the first year and get promoted to firefighter. Wage increases from $64,191 after the first year. They gonna pass all their certifications. Requirement, high school diploma, GED, age 21 to 39, valid driver's license, physically fit. Just wanted to make sure that all gets out. Women and minorities is strongly encouraged to apply, especially civil city residents. Always found it doesn't do much good if we have a big emergency and we gotta call them in from two counties over. So we'll get out there and apply for the fire department. If you know that young person or yourself, wanna make some good money, have a good career in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments. Are there any other public comments at this time?
Ernie, how I am real cool glad of street. I, I, I know you all voted for that, but I don't agree with moving that public comment to here when we got all this to go through. And I won't be able to speak on it until I get, you get past it. You guys do things and then public comment's already over. How are we gonna express our feelings on things? You need to hear what we have to say.
Public comments? Are there any other public comments at this time?
Good evening, Council Dakota Ullers, 718 Emma Street, Michigan City. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to invite everyone, especially the youth and families in our neighborhoods, to attend the next Michigan City Midnight Hoops event this Sunday at the YMCA. This program developed by the Michigan City Economic Development Leadership Academy is offering more than just a basketball league. It's a safe, structured, empowering environment for young people ages 13 to 25 to stay active, meet mentors, and access real community resources. The games are on every Sunday evening through August 10th with the exception of July 6th, which is past. Ages 13 to 15 play from 6:30 to 8:30 and 16 to 25 take the court from 9 till midnight. If you haven't attended, I encourage you to stop by to the energy and witness what kind of investment and youth can look like in real time. I mean, I would say it was really nice to be down there this Sunday and see the new MCUEA logo on the back of all those shirts and to be able to support those children. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the last call for public comment. Are there any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Um, my name is Jim McKay. I live at 111 Mayfield Drive. I have some questions that I know won't be answered, but I thought I would ask them anyways. Basically, in regards to what I've been reading about the last several days of this proposed data center that is possibly coming to the City of Michigan City. This supposed data center that is coming that is going to be off of Royal Road will not be very far from my home as well as other subdivisions that have been recently built out there and also new subdivisions that are planned to be built behind my property or used to be farmland. My questions are this, and I hope that these questions do get answered to the public at some point in time. What is the cost to the city, the county, and taxpayers in regards to this? How will having this data center affect local residents in the area and their property taxes? How will affect their property values? Will we see an increase in local traffic along Royal Road and the adjacent roads with the new data center? How will this proposed data center's new presence affect the people who golf at the municipal golf course that is next to the property? Will it become a distraction because there is a possible constant noise being generated from machinery? Power generators? Will that make their golfing experience no longer a pleasant one? Power consumption? Is NIPSCO keeping their plant here open in Michigan City in order to power this? Will NIPSCO be converting?
McKay, I do apologize, but your three minutes is now suspended. It is up. So what I would ask that you do, those questions that you're opposing to, your comments and questions that you're opposing to the council, to, um, please send that to us via email and you can also forward that information onto the clerk's office as well and that will also get to us as well. In regards to that, I greatly appreciate your time. Thank you. Public comments is now closed. Moving on to our agenda, next we have reports from boards and commissions.
Madam President, on order. As far as the public comment goes, I don't know if anybody else had anything else to say. But I don't know, you didn't make another ask. You just said it's closed. Shouldn't you probably ask them if they, if there anybody else that wants to speak?
I actually called it three times. I'm only required to call it three times.
No, I understand that.
And then that was after my third call and then I did indicate public comments are now closed. And that is per Roberts Rule. And again, next on our agenda, we have reports from boards and commissions. But before we do that, let me just explain this as to why we are doing the public comments at this point. It is possible that ordinances or the way things or the formalities of things, how things have been ran in the past, to take into consideration that it is possible that a decision may be made to change of when we do public comments. So this is how it's going to be ran for this evening. Moving forward onto our agenda, we are on reports from boards and commissions. Councilman Beatrice?
Um, a quick note from the Veterans Commission. We met yesterday and the Veterans Commission for Michigan City is partnering with La Porte veterans and really Indiana veterans and veterans from all over the place to sponsor a military stand down. A military stand down, if you don't know what it is, is it's a huge meeting of service providers from the county area, from the state area, from the federal government that all come together in one place and they address the needs of veterans, whether they may be homeless, whether they maybe have a little, having trouble finding jobs, whether they need food, whether they need medical help, whatever. They all meet in one place and it like, it's the one that we're sponsoring is August 23rd. It'll run from 9 to 3 at the La Porte Civic Auditorium. You'll hear more about it. It'll be publicized more as we get closer to that date. But the City of Michigan City, through the Veterans Commission, will also be providing transportation for any veteran who doesn't have a car or who may be ADA that needs some help on a bus that has ADA, that's ADA compliant. So we're encouraging all veterans who have any issues whatsoever that they feel are not being addressed to make sure they make it to the stand down at the Civic Auditorium in La Porte on August 23rd from 9 to 3. The bus that we will sponsor will leave from squat post and the, it's 9 to 3, but you probably aren't gonna be there the whole day. There'll be like five buses that will rotate and go to La Porte and come back and go to La Porte and come back. So this is an important thing for all veterans to be aware of and to take advantage of. Thank you.
Are there any other reports from boards and commissions at this time? Any other reports from boards and commissions at this time? If there are no other reports from boards and commissions, we will move down to the reports of special or select committees. Any reports of special or select committees? Reports of special or select committees. There are none reports from mayor or other city officers and departments.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, clerks. So a couple of things. First, just to piggyback off of what Dakota said, great event this past Sunday. Kids were out there, young adults were out there. Great event. Hopefully after this round, we'll have another round of, uh, of games after that. But wonderful turnout. We hope to see people there for the next couple of Sundays. But wonderful way to support young people and graduates of the Michigan City Leadership Academy. And then as far as the public comment, I do have a question. I just want to make sure, but you're still continuing with your rules as far as after every ordinance they can speak and all that. Okay, good. But I do want to address the data center because I think the couple of things that are incorrect that have happened and, and a private developer can do what they want. But I've been very clear, we've never had an agreement from the city. That's why nothing has been brought to the city council. I have not agreed to anything and that's why, um, basically I asked to be removed from the NDA last week and we didn't move forward. And I issued a press release because it didn't meet what I thought was the community benefit. And that's it. So anybody can go to the state and request, make the request. It typically doesn't happen. You usually don't see what's happening the way it is. Typically, they get, come to the city, they request what they want from the city before they go to the state. It happened in reverse, so it was made public. But the council, and I just want to say this, the council, we're all still under NDAs. We're all still under NDAs. I said, but from my standpoint, no incentive has been provided by the City of Michigan City. Hasn't been agreed upon and gave best and final offer and it didn't happen. So it's just what it is. Now, as I've stated, and I know that I've been reached out to, they could come back, but they have to sell this to you all and to the public. The public benefit for me has to be a benefit. Whether 30 jobs is not significant. Are we gonna have union contractors building the place? Are we gonna have Michigan City residents on site building the place? Those are the public benefits. Are we gonna receive a significant amount of money upfront to do capital projects for Michigan City? Are we gonna receive money annually to help Michigan City? What are we gonna get out of it? I couldn't come to an agreement that I felt was the right agreement. So that's why we're here. So anything that you seen, they can go to the state. They can do all those things. But again, no incentive has been brought to the city council at all. At all. Not one time. Uh, and so for this to move forward, if it does, it's on the developer and that organization to bring it to you and to sell it to you and the public, to have a public workshop, to do those things. But most developers and developments, all those things happen behind closed doors. A lot of things you never see, you never see it until it's presented to you and it's brought to the council. And that has not happened in any shape, way, or form. So, um, you know, as far as that's concerned, that's where we're at. And if it's gonna, if it moves forward anyway, it has to be brought to the council and to the public for public scrutiny. Moving forward to that, I do want to move on. We had unfortunate death last week. Let me, let me say this to the public, you know, I made a comment, um, you know, we got young people that are looking for things to do. But there's a level of respect that we have to have for not only our young people, but for the police as well. You can't have it both ways. And, um, and, and you don't want to see anyone lose their life. We have minors carrying guns. We had a, a great, they had a pop-up event on the west side with no issues. But after that, you know, you have an event that moved to another location and then to another space on the boulevard. You can't have it where you don't want to be overpoliced, but then you cry when the police ain't there. But you got all these people where the owner says that they can be there. Right? So all I'm saying is the community, we need you to, to stand up and help in these situations. You can't have it both ways. As I said at our last town hall, I'm not taking care of your kids at 1 o'clock in the morning. That's not the city's responsibility for these young adults. We had to be at home. I'm sorry, 8, 10 o'clock, we were on the porch, hanging out with our music, doing what we were gonna do. I wasn't hanging out at the gas station at 1 o'clock in the morning. That's what, that's what it is. And I, we, we can't continue to have these situations. So I'm gonna say this. I told the police officers and, and a lot of these police officers went to school with some of these people. Right? This is not, these are not officers from 10 counties away, three counties away. These are Michigan City high school graduates that are policing on these shifts. And, um, we gotta be better as residents and the turn up is fine, right? Until somebody gets killed, right? And I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it. So if you want to be disrespectful and throw rocks and stuff at the police cars, just understand you're gonna get arrested. Point blank. If you want to stand in the middle of the road when you've been told to get out of the road, just understand you're gonna be arrested. This is not acceptable in any shape or form. Giving you space to have events at these parks, but you gotta be respectful of law enforcement and be respectful of your neighbors. Just because one person is okay with 400, 200, 10 cars and loud music doesn't mean all the residents want that. And I know that because they were calling. So we have to be better and, and our young adults, if you want that, you gotta be respectful as well. Otherwise, you're gonna be locked up. It's just what it is at this point. So I hate to end on that note, but that's where we're at. We can't have another situation like that. It looked like something off a movie, you know? You know, this is not, um, uh, I forgot the name of it, but you say having my eyes in college, she used to go pregnant. Well, you're not doing that. That's not what we're gonna do in Michigan City. So it's just what it is. And, um, and like I said, it's unfortunate. But as far as the data center, until the developers come and present something to the council or to the public, that's where we're at. That's where we're at. You all know that. So you can go for a conquer, you know, I, as far as anything else, that's where we're at. I have nothing else to add on that. So any questions for me?
Madam President?
Priszbalinski?
Yeah, not on the center, but on the criminal activity, I'm gonna call it, in the unfortunate murder that took place, or shooting that took place Saturday night. Okay. Friday night, it was either one. But anyway, I appreciate the stand that you're taking. You know, that if people want to act the way they're acting, then unfortunately, they're gonna have to be arrested. And that's just the way Michigan City is gonna deal with it. Cause I saw from a law enforcement officer, a video from what was taking place over on Gray Street. And I was, I was amazed. I mean, if I lived over there, I would've been at the mayor's office Sunday morning at 8 o'clock in the morning saying, what are you gonna be doing about this? It was totally disrespectful to the neighbors and to the whole community. And Michigan City is a lot better than what was taking place there. I don't know where all these people came from. I don't know if they're from Michigan City or they're from out of town. I've heard that some of them come from Chicago possibly and they interact. And then this is what gets going, but I appreciate the stand that you're taking, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, and it's necessary. And again, you, you know, you can't have it both ways. That's all I can say. You can't have it both ways. You know, we give you a little freedom, give an inch, take a mile. Can't have it both ways. And now, you know, a few people make it hard for everybody. Think about a few weeks ago, we had a situation at home and you know what happened? They all showed up to clean it up the next day, right? They had a, they had a similar party. No, no issues. No issues. But after 10, 10:30, everybody wants to take the party somewhere else. Take it inside. Why do we have to be out in the middle of the roads, blocking traffic? It's, it's not, it's not right. And people can be mad, they can blast me, but you're gonna be arrested. We're not gonna tolerate this the rest of the summer. So figure out what you want to do. Be arrested, find a, a safe place to hang out or be arrested if you want to be disrespectful. Cause we have respected the space. And, uh, unlike ever before. And it still didn't work. So here we are. And it's just not acceptable. It's not acceptable for the, for the residents.
Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I have a question about the data center. I've been receiving several questions on it and one of the biggest questions I received is about the continued construction. Would you be able to address that?
It's a private property. It's a private owner. They've been working on that site. That's, it's a private, they pull permits. There's permits, go, they pull for your request. That's a, it's a private, they pull permits. There's permits, go, they pull for your request. So. They can do that. Uh, uh, is it, any other questions about it?
From the council? There are none, Madam Pres- Madam Mayor. Thank you. Are there any other city officers and departments at this time? Any other city officers and departments?
We even, uh, Miss, Miss, Miss President and Council. Here to present the annual um, tax abatement compliance report for twenty twenty five. We've got ten companies and thirteen abatements uh, outstanding. Uh, we had a meeting this past week with the committee who went and reviewed the um, company that um. Trying to um, in compliance, and so with that, um, um, it was sent to, through your um. The packet earlier this, or last week. And as, you know, some companies are still trying to recover from COVID. Uh, there's a few that are having problems, just um, getting qualified people. I know one company. Uh, they're looking for chemists and biologists and they're having a hard time doing that, because they do a lot of um, work in that, in that arena. Uh, we do have a few companies who have hired way abo- above and beyond their number, uh, they were supposed to. Uh, like two or three hundred above, which is great, so. Um, but overall, I think everybody's trying to meet their obligations. So I think the uh, committee uh, voted to bring it to, to the, to the council and have the council um, approve it. Questions, comments?
Councilman Beatry. Um, when we uh, met on this, we kinda went back and forth on who's gonna go first here. Me give the tax abatement, the reporter, Clarence uh, asked for the request to uh, approve. I'll give you a brief uh, comment on what happened. That's a tax abatement committee meeting. Uh, we did meet, well, first of all, the, I, I met as chairman of the tax abatement committee. With um, Liliana Franco from EDC and the city clerk, uh, Gail Nyleb. And I was the only member of the committee that met with them, so there was no violation of the open door. There are three members of the committee, it was just me that met with them. And then the committee itself met um, on July ninth. Uh, there are three members, two of them were there, uh, councilwoman Lee and myself. Um, Clarence Hulse gave an informative discussion of what tax abatement's all about, how it's created. Uh, how it's evaluated and responsibilities of the city council relative to that. Uh, he mentioned that there were ten different uh, companies and uh, thirteen separate abatements, cause some of them have more than one. Um, they represented thirty-one million in real estate investment. And over forty-five and a half million in equipment investment among those thirteen. Um, Councilwoman Lee and I, after careful consideration of each request, determined that. The companies have made a good faith effort to comply with the commitments to the city in terms of investment dollars and workforce development. Uh, Councilwoman Lee men uh, motioned that tax abatement committee should approve the res- request. And recommend approval to the city council at our next meeting, which is today. Uh, I seconded that, uh, since there are only two of us, there were no nay votes. So uh, the committee is recommending to the city council at large today that we approve the abatements. That uh, kind of Mr. Hulse has talked about.
Are there any other comments from the council?
Can I, can I um, ask a question that has nothing to do?
Is it about the abatement?
No.
What, what does it mean? No, yeah, we're just on the abatement now. Um, are there any other comments from the council on the tax abatement? There are none?
I recommended the approval.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Beatry and a second by Councilwoman Lee. Madam Clark, on the vote, please.
Ms. Chelman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson, sorry. And Mr. President. We have six in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Wineski Cemetery Superintendent, City of Michigan City. Uh, about a year ago, I stood here uh, asking the council to fund a number of improvements. For a lot of items that had been neglected that are both are municipal cemeteries over the last several years. Uh, at that time, the board was gracious enough to give us the funding needed to repair a lot of those items. So, I wanted to return here tonight to just show you some of the progress we made over the last twelve months. So, I have a short PowerPoint presentation and I'll go through it as quick as I can. Um, again, about a year ago, the, the council um, provided a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the funding. Now, and I'll explain how that was spent, but I'll start with our burial stats um, for annual reports. The first chart I have here uh, compares our burial methods. It'd be the uh, traditional burial, ground burial. And then our ash burials, which are cremations, and then our entuments. And this just kinda shows you where we're at, what's most popular right now. And again, uh, cremations and traditional burials uh, tend to be our most popular right now. Now, uh, there's not a lot of entuments, I suspect that's because of the cost of an entument, so. Uh, this chart shows our monthly burial stats. Um, when I took over the cemetery apartment, or department about a year ago, um, we didn't have stats. So, beginning last year, I started um, keeping stats. So that from this point on, we can track how many burials we have each month and compare that on a year-to-year basis. So we can do better planning for staffing, so when we know when our busier months are and when we need to staff. At a higher level, so that's the purpose of this chart. Uh, we'll go back to that. Can we go back to the previous? Um, most importantly here, our total burials, or interments for last year. We had a total of two hundred and forty-seven interments that we did. Uh, full burials, which is the traditional ground burial, was a hundred and twenty-four. Ash or cremations was a hundred and seven, and entuments was sixteen. Uh, again, like I said, uh, about a year ago, the council provided us a hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds. To repair uh, many of our large ticket items that needed to be repaired. Uh, first of all, um, the first item we spent the money on was repairing the HVAC system. At the Serenity Mausoleum, which is located at Swan Lake. Uh, we spent a total of thirty-one thousand dollars repairing the two, or replacing the two rooftop units on that. That was a very large uh, project for us. What that allowed is for the public to once again use the Serenity Maus- Mausoleum for services for burials. Because for many years before that, the HVAC system wasn't working, so we weren't able to use it during um, extreme cold or heat. So, much appreciated that we can now use that beautiful building. The second item we used the money for was to install new flooring in all of our buildings. Uh, for a total of uh, about thirty-six thousand dollars. And as you can see from two of the photos I provided here tonight. The photo on the right is the um, Serenity Mausoleum. And the one on the left is the Chapel of Chimes, both at Swan Lake Cemetery. It's a hundred percent improvement. The carpet that we had in both those buildings held a lot of orders, so we got rid of the, the orders. That were present in both those buildings for many years. Next item we spent the money on, or we're currently spending the money on, cause we haven't completed this project yet. Is the renovation of the exterior of the Swan Lake Cemetery office. As you can see, the present condition, the windows are rotting. The siding was rotting, so we're currently in the middle of replacing all of the windows, uh, repairing some of the siding. And then once that is complete, we're gonna uh, paint the building, so look much nicer. The biggest project that we have undertaken, uh, and we're still completing that task. Is the purchase of a cemetery mapping software system. We contracted with SEM Sites, who's a national company that provides these services to um, cemeteries all over the country. Uh, we spent fifty-five thousand dollars so far on that, and there'll be an annual licensing fee to go with that. Uh, but what this will allow is to allow the public to actually go online and look up burials of loved ones. And then in addition to that, they'll also be able to go online and post obituaries or uh, photos of their family members too. Um, and in addition to that, yes, here, here is a sample. This isn't the completed um, appearance or, or Facebook, or, or our uh, internet site yet. But what it is, is you'll enter the name of the, your loved one. Uh, it'll give you walking or driving directions to that location. Um, and that'll help, because our offices are only open eight hours a day. If someone comes in on the weekend or after hours, they'll still be able to look up a location of their loved one and able to get directions to that location. So, this will be a big improvement for the cemetery, not only because it provides extra services to the public. But it'll allow us to computerize all of our burial records. Because um, currently, all of our burial records are in the form of typewritten index cards, pretty much. So, uh, when this is complete, we'll have a more modern way of looking up all of our burial records. In addition to the hundred and fifty thousand that was spent out of the ARPA funding. The cemetery board also agreed to match that funding with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which came from our cemetery extension funds. And some of the items that we used to purchase, um, used that money to purchase. We bought a new uh, irrigation system and um, uh, fountain for our pond at Swan Lake. Um, it serves two purposes, not only for a, a nice visual display, but it also helps keep the water clean at Swan Lake. We didn't get this till late last year. Many, you may have noticed that uh, during this hot summer month last year, the entire uh, pond scummed over. And we were getting many complaints, cause people were concerned about the health of the swans. So hopefully, this uh, fountain will help alleviate that problem. Second item we bought was the uh, large farm tractor. And that was for uh, the purpose of mowing our large farm fields uh, out at um, Swan Lake. Before, we were using our sixty-inch zero turns, which was uh, uh, creating a burden on those units. It was um, unnecessary wear and tear. And then another item we spent a, a considerable amount of money on, I think around thirty thousand dollars, was electrical upgrades to both cemeteries. Uh, all of our buildings, our offices now have LED lighting, which is more cost efficient. And we also installed new lighting at our veteran's circle at Swan Lake. Another item we repaired was the irrigation system, uh, the pump house at Swan Lake. Uh, we spent a considerable amount of money repairing that and replacing the well and plumbing that goes along with that. The purpose of that was this system provides water to our uh, our pond at Swan Lake. So that was necessary for the swans. And the other item we spent uh, money on was painting and remodeling the interior of both of our offices, both at Swan Lake and um, Greenwood. Another item we spent the money on was a large commercial lawn roller, roller. Um, many of the complaints we received at Swan Lake is the mow hills. Um, it's too expensive to buy um, any kind of um, material that we would spread to deter the, the uh, the moles. So, we spent the money on this roller to help compact them on a daily basis. And then another item would be the exterior of all of the mausoleums. Uh, this is specifically is a picture of the Greenwood exterior that we renovated recently. Uh, one of the maintenance problems I found when I took over, over both cemeteries. Was that a lot of our nice equipment, that was nice at one time, had never been maintained. Uh, there were no maintenance records of any of the equipment, so we start, started from scratch. The photos you have here are just examples of before and after of how the items looked. Um, before we started maintaining them and now after. We had a really nice bad coat at Swan Lake that sat with flat tires and was rotting away. We spent very little money to get that cleaned up and running, along with some of our mowers and our UTVs. Uh, last year, we found that we had uh, a number of OSHA violations. And this was because we hired a consultant uh, that specializes in OSHA violations and compliance. One of the items we spent the money on um, was the installation of new fuel islands at both Swan Lake and Greenwood. This brings us into compliance with OSHA regulations. We also purchased new first aid kits, AEDs in Iowa stations to bring us into compliance for those violations also. One of the major items uh, that I found when I took over. Was the uh, deplorable conditions that our swans were being uh, housed in during the summer months, or I'm sorry, during the winter months. As you can see, the before picture is the dog kennel that was being used to house the swans. Um, with the assistance of the local carpenters' union, who donated their time. We were able to construct an eight-by-twenty uh, new shelter for the swans, which they very much enjoy. We had them housed in there during all the winter months. Um, as you can see from the photos, they're happy. Uh, they're well-fed. We consulted with a uh, swan breeder, so they're receiving the proper diet now. And they also have a heated pool in there during the winter months, uh, which they really enjoyed. Our finances for last year, in this, this chart, the first table up here is, is current as of last week. Um, the cemetery has four funds, which the cemetery board maintains. It would be the Greenwood Permanent Maintenance Fund, the Swan Lake Permanent Maintenance Fund, the Extension Fund, and the Merchandise Fund. The Greenwood Permanent Maintenance Fund and the Swan Lake Permanent Maintenance Fund are funds that we cannot touch. The only thing that we receive off that is the interest that's earned. We cannot touch the principal on either of those accounts. So, even though they look like large accounts that we could be spending money on or money out of, uh, we can't touch those. We can only touch the interest. And I would note that the interest uh, that we receive off those goes straight into our operating budget. And that's projected at the beginning of the year when we do uh, our finance meetings. And then the second table just shows how all of our sales are dispersed. Um, a lot of the sales portion goes into our operating fund. But a certain portion goes in to build up our maintenance funds and extension funds. Our total sales for two thousand twenty-four were three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and ten cents. And then our interest, which accrued from our maintenance and extension funds. Uh, was ninety-six thousand dollars, four hundred and sixty-five, so. And again, all that money is kinda forecast when we do our budget meetings this year for next year. So it's all planned for our operating expenses, so it's not additional money that we can just spend on wishless items this year. Our special projects for last year. Um, last year, when I was cleaning out our buildings, I found about seventy bronze markers. Uh, which are called veterans' markers. And a veteran's marker is a grave marker that's, which is provided to a veteran when they pass away, free from the federal government. Uh, for some reason, I don't know if it's the families couldn't afford the granite that these have to be mounted on. But these sat abandoned in both of our maintenance buildings for many years. Some of these went back decades. Uh, so we had about seventy veterans that weren't being honored with these grave markers. So, when I found these, I contacted the American Legion, Walgang, and the Guardian Riders. The Guardian Riders stepped up and agreed to start a fundraising campaign. To fundraise for the granite that's necessary to mount these markers on. Thanks to their efforts, we were able to raise enough money to fund the purchase of the granite to install all of these markers. And again, the Walgang came up with money to um, purchase about sixty of those pieces of granite. And I'd also like to recognize um, both the Guardian Riders and the Walgang for their efforts. All of our efforts last year um, resulted in a significant amount of maintenance items being fixed. But I'd just like the board and the public to know how well the city departments worked together. Because we were able to stretch our money due to the cooperation of all these other city departments. Specifically, Sean Smith over at the Street Department. He's given us uh, drivers and trucks to haul our sand and, and dirt that we purchased for our backfill on our graves. That saves us delivery charges. He's given us uh drivers and trucks to haul our sand and and dirt that we purchased for our backfill on our graves that saves us delivery charges. Uh Michigan City Parks Department, Pat Volz over there routinely loans us equipment that we don't have. They're special one-time use pieces of equipment. Uh Michigan Central Maintenance, Darryl Garbatschik is great about servicing our vehicles whenever we have something break down. Uh Michigan City Sanitation Department, they were a big help. Our um our sanitation or our septic system over at Swan Lake is failing. Um later this year, we will be hooked up to the new sanitation line that's being run to the annexed areas of the city. But uh instead of paying a local contractor to pump out our septic on a monthly basis, the sanitation department has been doing that for us. Uh Michigan's I I Michigan City IT Department, I can't thank them enough. When we were doing our electrical upgrades, uh we decided to put all of our overhead utilities at Swan Lake underground because our poles through utility poles out there were failing. So it was a lot cheaper to put the utilities underground rather than repairing all these poles. Uh Terry Borloff came out with the boring machine that they're using to do the fiber optics throughout town and saved us about twenty to thirty thousand dollars uh boring all that the electrical lines for us. So a big thank you to him. I'd like to thank Mary Lynn for her patience with us as we spent all this money in the controller's office. Um and then last of all, I'd like to thank PG Electric. They did all of our electrical upgrades and they were great to work with. They gave us a really good price and we were able to be a lot more done because of the price they gave us. And lastly, um I would like to thank our seasonal staff out at Greenwood. Um the photo you see there is four of the five seasonal employees we have there. When I took over, um it was taken about five to six weeks to cut the entire um cemetery at Greenwood. Uh thanks to the efforts of these seasonal employees, we're down to three weeks. It takes us three weeks to get from one end of Greenwood to the other, which is a significant improvement. So I really would like to thank their efforts. Um lastly, our future projects that we have in sight for maybe not the next coming year, but hopefully in the near not-too-distant future. Um we've been working with the Michigan City Sustainability Commission uh to possibly bring green burials to Swan Lake Cemetery. And what this is, and it's an environmentally um conscious way to bury a loved one. Um we wouldn't use the traditional methods of embalment. The body's not embalmed, um so there's no contamination of the ground surface. Uh and then we have been working with them to find some way to still use a vault so that we can bury them in the uh in the other areas of the cemetery so that we're not having to create a new garden for them. They'll actually be buried next to a traditional burial. But um a big thanks to the Sustainability Commission for working with us on that. Roxanne and myself attended a conference last year um with the Indiana Cemetery Association. And I just put these stats in here. We're moving more towards cremation rather than traditional burials. So we want to project how we need to prepare our cemeteries for the future, considering that more people are going to cremations rather than traditional burials. According to their statistics, in two thousand twenty-four, it was projected that sixty-one point nine percent of burials would be cremations compared to only thirty-three point two percent for traditional burials. And in two thousand forty-five, it's expected that eighty-two percent of burials will be cremations. So with that in mind, we're looking at possibly building a scatter garden at Swan Lake Cemetery. And a scatter garden is where a loved one brings their urn with the ashes of their loved one. And there will be a garden where they can scatter those so they're not just sitting on someone's shelf at home. And then there would be a wall where a plaque would be mounted so they would have a permanent uh memorial of their loved one. It'd be a lot cheaper alternative rather than purchasing a a crypt or a niche or a grave. And then um they project that about sixty-eight percent of people might be interested in green burials uh in the future, which is why we're taking the effort to explore green burial options. So that's my presentation and I'm willing to answer any questions.
Are there any comments um from the council? Councilor McCoulter?
Um thank you for all the work that you did. Um we saw your presentation last year. It was horrifying. I think I think you can speak for everybody. The room is silent, just just looking at the awful things. So you've done a lot of work and I really want to applaud you for that. Um and then the swans specifically, just they look so much happier going from a dog kennel to an actual swan. But thank you.
Councilman Chris Blominsky?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, Mr. Blominsky, you and I have uh talked a number of times. And uh I know that you invited me out there after you first got the uh job. And I think that you were the best hire that the cemetery department could have. Uh you're doing a fantastic job. Uh I'm proud of you. The city should be proud of you. And everybody that has family members at Swan Lake or Greenwood should be uh satisfied of the work and what the cemeteries uh look like. And yeah, and response to the uh swans is that uh Jeff, remember when we came out there, you showed me, we went over there and looked where the swans were at and they were in that little bitty shed. And you know, right away, we kind of started putting our heads together on how we could get that result. And that's uh very great. And I like the way that the uh all the city departments kind of came together and huddled around you to get the work done and to make the uh improvements out there. So I think that's very good. And just one more thing and uh Councilwoman Lee, because I think the Sustainability Committee does this, they gave out awards last year, didn't they? For LED lighting and or was it solar panels? Was it solar panels? But anyway, if you make improvements at your business, right, and you submit an application, you can get an award. So is there some way that we can get an award for the uh cemetery uh department for doing what they've uh done with the LED uh lightings? I think that would be very appropriate. So anyway, thank you, Jeff. And Roxanne, where's Roxanne? Stand up, Roxanne. Let everybody see who you are. Let's give Roxanne a hand too. Yeah. She's been here a while and she does a fantastic job, so thank both of you for what you do.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh hey. Next on our agenda, um Madam Press, um Madam Clerk, our first petition for this evening?
A petition for establishment of economic improvement district pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash twenty-two.
And this petition. Um we actually have um Scarlett York, if you wouldn't mind, coming up in regards to the petition or. Also, just to um convey that during our redevelopment commission uh commission meeting on yesterday, that that board also passed the resolution number six dash two five, which was the resolution of the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission approving amendments to the declaratory resolution and the economic development plan for the consolidation of the economic development area for the purpose of establishing a new allocation area and regarding certain related matters.
Thank you. Yes, good afternoon, um Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Council. Um I'm Scott York. I'm the Director of Redevelopment. Uh with me tonight, I have Mr. Alan Shockman, who's one of the developers that will be that we have been working with with the Sola Development. This petition tonight is basically um the the property owners right now, the property owners are the city and um two LLCs that we have created to disperse that property so that we could actually start this um um Economic Improvement District or EID as as the acronym might be. Eventually, once that uh EID is established, we would we would, there'll be a board established with that. Um but obviously, the ownership of that of that land will transfer to uh the developers at a time uh when they have all their financing in place. Um but I just want to uh just thank you for hearing it and thanks for letting us submit it. And I'll let Alan say anything if you'd like to, Alan, if you'd like to introduce yourself a little bit more.
Sure. Alan Shockman with um Sola Development Partners. The uh the, thank you for uh agreeing to uh form an EID. I know this is uh the first of several meetings and uh hopefully it'll get approved. This will allow us to uh sell bonds. The bonds are repaid by essentially revenue from the project itself. The the area is only the project cited, has no effect on any of the other city properties, city finances, uh bond rating, any any of those. It's strictly revenues from the project. Um and these uh revenues, along with the TIF bonds, are very important uh to the project because without those, um the project would be uh very, very difficult to finance. Thank you.
Also, I'd just add, this is a very unique EID. It's not, it's not uh unique in that it uh one doesn't exist like it. There actually are two in the state, but this will be a vertical EID rather than horizontal. So it'll be one building and it'll be vertical. Um and it's and it's in the nature of its construction as any uh as its structure as an EID. So there are other examples of EIDs in the state. Uh and there are two other uh vertical EIDs in the state as well.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council, Councilman Chris Blominsky? Councilman Nelson?
Um Mr. York, where are those, where are those two other examples?
Oh man, you were gonna, I knew you'd ask me. Uh one of them is actually in Hammond. Um and then I cannot remember. We'll look back at Clarence. Uh do you remember? In Fort Wayne. Yeah. And then there's various other uh vertical EIDs or sometimes they're interchangeable with BIDs, bit business improvement districts.
Okay. Are there any other um comments from the council? If there are none, I would like to entertain a motion.
So much.
Uh no, just, I don't have to.
I I think we will be coming back to you through various at various points uh and kind of laying out um the EID structure. Uh and then also um there's a TIF component to this as well, bond. And we'll be coming back to you. There'll be another reading tonight. And then uh we will be coming back to you in uh on May, I'm sorry, Au- August fourth for a full presentation, if you will.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk, on communications, please.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on July ninth from the Michigan City Fire Fighters Association, Local four seventy-five, regarding opening contract negotiations. Um a notice was received on July eighth from the attorney Alan Cernak regarding notice of intent to file a petition for establishment of economic improvement district for the Sola project. Um cor- correspondence was received in the clerk's office on the seventh from the Michigan City Police Department regarding the National Night Out Event. A formal public hearing notice was received in the clerk's office on June twenty-six regarding the proposed crew car wash located at forty-two fifty-two Franklin Street.
Okay, our first resolution for this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read our first resolution by title only, please?
A resolution by Todd Wollley, a resolution of the common counsel of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, granting D. Martin Enterprises, Inc. an assessed evaluation deduction tax abatement for depreciable personal property installed and placed into service pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one, one dash twelve point one. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatty.
Is there any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, um D. Martin Enterprises, this is the second abatement. The first one was for the property itself. This is for equipment. Uh it's a family-owned business. It's been here since nineteen seventy-five. Um they provide solutions for electric art furnaces for the steel mills. So they have a lot of uh partners in the area. And they recruit locally. Uh they're partners with AK Smith. They do a lot of mock interviews there, so they partner with our local school system. And the equipment they are looking to purchase is robotic racking systems, forklifts, paddle mixers, mixing dust, exhaust systems, welding machines with the portable exhaust systems, overhead cranes, hatch dryers, a plotter, network infrastructure to allow for the shaping of refractory pieces utilized in the uh melt shop of steel mills. So hu- high-quality stuff, great business, uh a great business to have in Michigan City and to partner with us. And um I'm very much in favor of uh offering the resolution to uh grant the tax abatement. I think EDC has some things to say too. Maybe.
Thank you. Still what I was gonna say. No, I'm just here to echo um what Councilman Beatty said. Um D. Martin Enterprises has been here.
State your.
Oh.
The department.
Caroline Cardagina Edwards, Economic Development Corporation. Um just re-echoing what Councilman Beatty said. D. Martin has been in Michigan City for over thirty years and um we're excited to have them um doing this expansion and choosing Michigan City, La Porte County over again. Um if you drive past their facility right now, you're gonna see they're over fifty percent complete. Um and so now um they're just coming back again to request the personal property tax abatement. Um and I'll let Cassie Martin Graham, President of D. Martin, say.
Cassie Martin Graham, uh VP of Operations for D. Martin Enterprises. Uh thank you, Councilman Beatty, for that wonderful introduction. Um I think I remember most of you from about a year ago before we started construction. So as Caroline said, we're over fifty percent done. We're already starting to hire people, getting them trained where we operate out of right now. Um when I would say the majority of them out of the high school here and Ivy Tech. So we're excited. I hope you all come by and see it. Um yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to open this up now for public comment. Are there any public comments on this resolution? Are there any public comments on this resolution? Are there any other public comments on this resolutions? If there are none, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Nelson?
Um, thank you. Um how many jobs did this uh open up with this expansion?
I believe on the application, it's quite a few. Um it's about fifty jobs.
Madam President?
Councilman Chris Blominsky?
Yeah, and what's the uh average salary of your of your employees?
I mean. I apologize. I am not our HR director. Um I will say for general labor, we start at twenty dollars an hour and assess that after two months. Um so our our really no degrees are required, no training required, starts at that number.
Okay.
Full benefits.
Okay, and then I guess this is saying that if you get the abatement, the equipment, right, it's you have two years to get it installed. Is that what you're looking at? No?
It's it's a little hard to understand, to be honest. I believe it was over three years, but I think we'll have most of them over the next two years. Maybe twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, because some of it will come before the end of the year.
Yeah, that's what it says, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. I guess what my what my question is, why two years or three years to get all this installed? Is that because it takes that long to get the uh equipment or?
It would be a mix of lead times on the equipment. Um once we get in there and start to see what we need, right? Um right now, we have two operating forklifts. We know we're gonna need at least one more. Um right, it's 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 hard to know exactly what the next few years look like.
Okay.
Yeah.
It it wouldn't have anything to do with tariffs. It, it wouldn't have anything to do with tariffs, right? I'm just, I'm being facetious with that. Just trying to get a laugh, that's all. Uh, it's okay, it's okay to laugh.
Councilman Beatry?
Um, I, I have the SB one form that you, uh, filled out. Uh, current number of employees is twenty-one. Uh, salaries are one million, one hundred sixty-two thousand, three hundred sixty-two dollars and ten cents. Um. Those are retained employees and the number of the, uh, of additional are thirty-four. And the salaries will be one million, nine hundred seventy-eight thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars. To answer your question.
Are there any other comments from the council? May I enter, may I entertain a motion on this resolution?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Beatry and a second by Councilman Pris Balinski. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Calter.
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
This resolution has passed. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, on our first ordinance by title only for the evening. No, I'm sorry, second resolution by title only, please.
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, accepting a petition. For the creation of an economic improvement district and regarding other matters related thereto. And this is introduced by Ms.
Oh, good afternoon again, um, counsel, this Skylar York, Director of Redevelopment. Uh, and Mr. Alan Shockman. Also online, I have Mr. Thomas Everett from Barnes and Thornburg. I would like for him to give you a little bit more robust explanation than I did of the economic improvement, uh, district. And actually what the petition is concerning, if that's okay with you. Um, Mr. White, would you please elevate him where he could speak? Um, Tom, can you give a, a better explanation, a more robust explanation about what we're doing tonight? And the economic improvement district and timeframes and things of that nature. And thank you for being here.
Yeah, happy to, Skylar. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, uh, members of the council. My name is Tom Everett with Barnes and Thornburg and we are bond council to the city. Um, so, uh, as, as Skylar said, this, uh, the petition is, uh, filed by the current owners of property within. The proposed EID district. Um, and that is just the square block where the SOLO project is anticipated to be constructed. And so, um, as Skylar mentioned, um, this is, um, the creation of an EID. An economic improvement district is authorized under Indiana statute. That's Indiana Code thirty-six, seven, twenty-two. And what that allows property owners to do after a, a district is created and established. Is the owners of the property within that district can, um, as- assess, um, assessments on the property that they own within that district. So as Skylar mentioned, uh, this does not affect any property in the city outside of that district. Um, it is just, uh, uh, action of the owners of property in the district itself to impose assessments just on themselves. Um, and so, as Skylar mentioned, this petition was filed with the city clerk's office. Um, this resolution, um, that is before you tonight acknowledges receipt of that petition. And then, under the statute, before a economic improvement district can be created. There has to be a public hearing held by the common council of the city. So this resolution then also authorizes a, a notice to be published regarding the public hearing. That pe- public hearing would then be held at the August fourth meeting of the council. And so this, this resolution then authorizes, uh, the council next at the, uh, I'm sorry, at the meeting in. Uh, on Octo- on August fourth to hold that public hearing. And after, um, after that public hearing, um, it is, um. Authorized under the statute for the, the common council to, um, uh. Adopt an ordinance establishing, um, and approving the creation of the economic improvement district. So this is really the first step, like Skylar mentioned, in this process. Um, later on, um, at this meeting, um, there will be up for first reading an ordinance. Um, the economic improvement district is established by an ordinance. And so that would be up for first reading tonight. That would be up for second reading at the August fourth meeting. And could then be considered for adoption after that public hearing. Um, so that's a very high-level overview of the petition. Um, and again, I would just reiterate that this is just. Um, only affects the properties within the SOLO project, um, uh, itself. And, and would not have any other impact on properties in the city.
Um, Tom, may, may you also speak about, uh, the hundred? Uh, once we file a petition, we have a hundred and twenty days to get everything in place, um. To, uh, get the board in place, things of that nature. Could you just speak a little bit about that?
Um, so, uh, at, the one hundred twenty-day, uh, limit actually just applies to the notice of intent to file a petition. Um, I, I, earlier on the agenda, in the communications section, there was. Uh, it was noted that there was a notice of intent to file petitions, um, filed by attorney, um, Alan Sirinek for the Redevelopment Commission. Um, there's actually, it's actually, uh, under the statute, there's a hundred twenty days to, after that notice is filed. For then the petition to be filed with the clerk of the city. So, um, that. Petition has already been filed, so we are, we've already met that one, one hundred and twenty-day time requirement. Um, but now there are further procedures required under the statute. Um, as I mentioned, the public hearing and, and consideration of the ordinance before the council could adopt the ordinance creating the EID.
Thank you. That was one of the questions that I had gotten asked. Thank you.
I would like to open this up for public comments on this resolution. Public comments. Are there any public comments on this resolution? Any public comments on this resolution? Public comments on this resolution? There are none at this time. Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Pris Balinski?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Councilman Pris Balinski and a second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Calter?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
We have six in favor and no one opposed.
And congratulations, this resolution has passed. Madam Clerk, um, this evening on our first ordinance by title only, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the city. Of Michigan City, Indiana, to issue one more series of its economic development revenue bonds. And approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto in connection with the SOLO. Project. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Um, the sponsor has no comments at this time. I will open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Public comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? If there are no public comments on this ordinance, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Are there any comments from the council? No comments or comments from the council. There are none at this time. This will be held over for a second reading. Madam Clerk, our next ordinance on first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana. Authorizing the city of Michigan City, Indiana, to issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bonds. And approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto in connection with the SOLO project. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And as sponsor, um, I do not have any additional comments. I believe that all information presently has been conveyed, um. By Alan and by, um, Skylar in regards to what the EID and these bonds are in reference to. So I would like to open this up for public comments on this ordinance. Public comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Public comments on this ordinance? If there are none, public comment is now closed. Any comments from the council? Are there any comments from the council?
Just a quick question. These are two separate bonds. Or two?
One is your EID.
Skylar, Director of Redevelopment, um, Councilman, you are correct. Two, two totally separate things. Uh, two totally separate funding sources. One of them is from any, from the economic improvement district that would be established. And then one of them is from a TIF that would be established on the same location. You're, you are correct. That's right, you are correct.
Councilman Pris Balinski?
Yeah, I have a question for, uh, Mr. York. Uh, and you're talking about creating another TIF district around this? Cause there, there's already a north end TIF.
It would be.
Can you explain that more?
Yes, so really, um, the way projects that we do, um, such as the train station or, um. Uh, large development projects that we would do. Those are, um, what's called, um, a, a project-specific TIF. And they are, we're basically, we would just be tech, we would just be tiffing the project itself, the building itself. The building itself. And that's what we'll be creating the incentive.
Okay, so with that building, the SOLO being tipped itself, then the tax money that's generated by the SOLO. Then where, where does that tax money?
That money would.
Go, does that go back to the city?
No, that would be.
Yeah, how is that used?
That'd be used to pay off the bond that would be authorized by this ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Are there any other comments from the council at this time? If there are none, this would be held over for second reading. Madam Clerk, on our next ordinance on first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only. Ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, establishing an economic improvement district. And authorizing and approving other actions with respect thereto. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
And again, I, as sponsor, I do not have any comments at this time unless, um, Mr. York, if you'd like to elaborate on this as well.
I won't elaborate on it, but I'll just remind everyone that at the August fourth meeting, uh, that Monday, August fourth, uh, we will have a form. We will have a formal presentation and a formal hearing at that, at that meeting. I'm so sorry. Y- yes, actually, yes, 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 you are correct. Yeah, uh, actually, all of them will be ready to present to you. On second, third readings, once we get to that point in the council.
Okay.
The council, yeah.
Okay.
A- and if there's a workshop in between, uh. There was a workshop, absolutely. There was a workshop. Um, what day was that workshop held? I forget.
The seventh?
Seventh, we hold a, yeah, tha- that's important, um, met, uh, let me, uh, kind of talk a little bit about that. Uh, we did have a public workshop on the seventh. Uh, at that workshop, we had a formal presentation by the developers. Uh, Mr. Alan Shockman and Mr. Scott Goodman were there. Um, I believe we had a very healthy discussion about. Uh, the two different bonds that you identified, uh, and how they work and the mechanics of them. And then, uh, we did have a very healthy discussion also on the e- economic improvement district, how it works. Uh, what it is and what it isn't. Um, and then, um. You know, even getting down to the, how the board's established and things of that nature. So. Um, we can talk a little bit more about that at the more formal presentation, um, at the next meeting, if you like.
Um.
Any other questions?
And also just for the council, um, I also did forward on to you the, uh, PowerPoint that was presented, um. At the time on, um, July seventh, too, if you would like to continue to review that as well. So if there are no other comments from the council, this ordinance will be held over for second reading. Madam Clerk, the next ordinance by, on first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section two dash four oh three A and B. In the Michigan City municipal code regarding the resident worker training development fund. And this is introduced by Ms. Maldonour. Mr. Beatry, Dr. Cora, Ms. Lee, Mr. Pris Walensky, and Mr. Dabney.
Uh, are there any comments from the sponsors? There are no comments from the sponsors. I will open this, yes, ma'am. I'm opening up public comment.
Good evening. So this is the fund, um, that is being established. I know that, um. We, we don't have a way to accept money into, um, we have monies that were from. Funds previously from our hiring ordinance. And we're getting ready to start our, do our first, uh, Indiana plan. Uh, but there are some organizations, um, I've reached out to Labor, um, that will look, uh, like to help sponsor the class. But in order to do that, we have to have a fund that is established. So we, we don't have a place to accept the funds. And so that's why, um, this has been presented. So the Indiana plan, um, at the next council meeting, actually before that, we'll send the information. We're gonna have, um, a couple of open houses, um, and then orientation will be held, um, early September. And then the first classes will be, um, in October. So the goal is to get the first group graduated. And hopefully do this on a, a regular basis in Michigan City, so that they don't have to worry about transportation. Um, the class will be he- held here in City Hall, um, as well. And the goal is to provide a stipend to those that participate. Um, at the end, they'll receive a stipend, a pair of work boots and those kind of things. So. We want to be able to accept funds into that fund to help cover the cost of those, those things. Cause we want it to be, um, it costs about twelve thousand dollars or more to put the class on. And I've asked the Indiana plan, you do it in other cities, why can't you do it in Michigan City? So, um, I've, uh, that's a bigger discussion about getting into their next year's budget. But in the meantime, it's something that the city is gonna cover.
Okay.
Any questions for me?
Are there any questions for the mayor regarding this, from the council? Councilman?
I have a question. I have a kind of a c- comment or, well, I do have a question, I guess. Um, there, there's actually funds out there. There's just a place to put them because we haven't established it yet. Um, so it's important that we do this and it might be a good idea when this moves to second. Uh, reading on the fourth, uh, move to third as well. And get this cr- created so we can start taking donations.
That's correct, because, um, I do have the letter, the sponsorship letter drafted. I hadn't sent it out because I knew this was on the agenda. Uh, but I need to get the contract with the Indiana plan on the, on the Board of Works in, in August. So I would request second and third reading, um, at that time.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other public comments on this ordinance? Any other public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council? Councilman Pris Balinski?
Yeah, Madam President, basically all this ordinance is doing is just creating a non-reverting fund. For this, uh, worker development plan and the, it, to somewhere to put the money. And by non-reverting means that the money that goes in there cannot be used for any other. Program. Or any other want or need in the city. So it's a very worthwhile program. Thank you.
Councilman Nelson?
Um, may I be added on as a sponsor?
Madam Clerk, if you will please add Councilman Nelson to this ordinance? Are there any other comments from the council? If there are none, this ordinance will be held over for second reading. Madam Clerk, on our next ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation on the budget of the golf non-reverting fund. Two five oh eight to replace the satellite irrigation system at the Michigan City Golf Course. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Um, the sponsor is absent for this evening. Um. I would then open this up for public comment on this ordinance.
Good evening, Council Shannon Easton Park Superintendent and Michael Moore, Green Superintendent. We're here to answer any questions you have. I think Michael gave you a very good explanation. Of why our system needs to replace or be replaced. Um, we do have a fairly healthy cash balance right now. Which I'm happy to report. So I just want everyone to know this is being paid for by the golf course, not by any city funds. We're just asking you to transfer it into our budget. Um, Michael's done his research and if he orders by October first. We can save approximately sixty thousand dollars on a buy one, get one free. buy one, get one free satellite sale, so I appreciate his diligence and hope for your support.
And I would just add, um I think this will also probably fall under in regards to what uh Councilman Chris Balinski does, elaborated on as a, the non-reverting funds. And once this comes up on second reading, to possibly request for half third reading as well.
That would be great, because we don't wanna miss the sales.
Yes. Okay, are there any public comments on this ordinance? I am opening this up for public comments. Any other public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments? There are none, public comments are closed. Any comments from the council, Councilman Chris Balinski?
I just have a question, so the satellite uh irrigation system. What does that exactly mean? Is that for the whole golf course and or is it just certain spots on the golf course?
Michael Moore Green Superintendent, Michigan City Golf Course. So it's, it's, the, the satellites are out on the golf course, that controls the heads that are in the ground. Yeah, so each hole has.
So it's just the electronic part? Uh, system.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council? There are none, this will be held over for second reading.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, um on our last ordinance for the evening on first reading, if you would, by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by, by only repealing, amending, and creating various articles and sections in the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding stormwater and drainage, and this is introduced by Mister Presley Balinski.
Does the sponsor have any comments on this ordinance?
Uh what I'd like to do, I think just to make it clear for everybody in the audience, council members, I know we received a lot of information with the two handouts and uh, yeah, well, what I wanna do is just read the uh ordinance uh verbatim, and that way, if you have any questions, you can ask uh Mister Wallace uh very quickly from the uh sanitary district. But anyway, uh the first whereas, the Indiana Department of Environmental Management requires that the Indiana MS four, and what the MS four stands for is a separate storm sewer system uh such as counties, cities, and towns to update their existing local ordinances regarding stormwater and drainage. And whereas the Michigan City Board of Sanitary Commissions has studied the existing conditions as well as the current state recommendations and has proposed the new stormwater and drainage ordinance. A copy of which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein in Exhibit A uh which was initially approved by the Michigan City Board of Sanitary Commissioners on January twenty second twenty twenty five and also June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. And whereas, while in the process of reviewing the uh Michigan City Code to draft the new stormwater and drainage ordinance, it was discovered that provisions for stormwater and drainage are randomly scattered throughout various chapters of the code, including sections and articles within the city's joint zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And whereas the need exists to modify or to recodify the city's stormwater and drainage ordinance in one central location in the code. And more specifically in chapter forty six under article eleven to be known as the Stormwater Management Regulations, and repeal all of the articles and sections in the code regarding stormwater and drainage, including repealing certain articles and sections in the city's joint ordinance and subdivision ordinance. And whereas the Plan Commission of the City of Michigan City has responsibility and in accordance with Appendix B subdivision control and Appendix C joint zoning ordinance of the City of Michigan City Municipal Code. And in accordance with Indiana Code thirty six dash seven dash four six oh five to act as an advisory board to the Common Council of the City of Michigan City concerning the zoning code and subdivision code of the City of Michigan City. And whereas the Plan Commission may pursuant to Indiana Code thirty six seven dash four uh six oh two, section B initiated proposal to amend or partially repeal the text of the zoning code and subdivision code. And whereas the Plan Commission has reviewed and studied the recommendations provided by its own planning department staff and staff of the Michigan City Sanitary District. And whereas, as presented to the Plan Commission on May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, public meeting and is approved by the Plan Commission at its June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, public meeting, the following article and section should be repealed, that sub, that section six, there or six point seven, stormwater management and section six point eight soil erosion in Michigan City subdivision ordinance, which is codified in the Michigan City Code as Appendix B subdivision control in Article twenty, stormwater management in the Michigan City Joint Zoning Ordinance, which is codified in the Michigan City Code as Appendix C joint zoning ordinance. Whereas, presented to the Plan Commission at its May twenty seventh meeting and is approved by the said commission at its June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five meeting, the Plan Commission made findings of fact approving Exhibit A and also additional amendments to accurately reflect cross references to Appendix B subdivision control in condominium division standards and Appendix C joint zoning ordinance as contained in Exhibit B, attached heretofore and made approved hereof and whereas upon notice, having been duly published in a public hearing held, to publish the Plan Commission made findings of fact approving a copy of which is in the office of the Plan Commission and the Michigan City Clerk. Approved and adopted Plan Commission Resolution number two dash twenty 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 five was a favorable recommendation to the Common Council of Michigan City, Indiana. And recommended that the Common Council approve and adopt the said amendments and whereas pursuant to Indiana Code thirty six seven dash four six oh seven. The Common Council has the authority and duty to consider, adopt, reject, or amend changes to the zoning code and the subdivision code, and as evidenced by Resolution two dash twenty twenty five of the Plan Commission filed with the Common Council together with the Exhibit Two said resolution, which is in the entire text of the proposed amendment and which is incorporated into this ordinance and made a part thereof. And whereas upon notice, having been duly published, the Common Council considered the repeal of the various sections and article of the joint code and subdivision code at the regular monthly meeting of the Common Council. And whereas the Michigan City Common Council has reviewed the certified resolution two dash twenty five, two dash twenty twenty five of the Plan Commission of the City of Michigan City. The findings of fact contained therein and related information has received and considered comments from the public regarding the proposed amendments and changes and provisions contained in Exhibit A and Exhibit B. And whereas the Common Council has determined that amending the city code zoning code and a subdivision code to adopt and incorporate the amendments would be in the best interest of the entire city. And whereas in addition, the Common Council reasonably believes it is in the best interest of the city to adopt the recommendations of the sanitary commissioners the Plan Commission and a new stormwater and adopt a new stormwater and drainage ordinance and recodify the same into chapter forty six, article eleven, to be known as the Stormwater Management Regulations. Therefore, be it ordained by the Common Council for the City of Michigan City. The following articles and sections in Michigan City Code are hereby repealed. Uh Article twelve in chapter twenty two entitled MS four post-construction activity stormwater management plan program. B, Article thirteen in chapter twenty two entitled MS Construction Activity Erosion and Sediment Control Program. Section and Item C, section fifty dash one forty three entitled penalty for violation of Article twelve which is the post-construction activity stormwater management program in chapter fifty and section fifty dash one forty four entitled penalty for the violation of Article thirteen, Construction Activity Erosion and Sediment and Control Program in chapter fifty. So Exhibit B, which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein is hereby adopted, which reflects all the amendments to the cross-reference numbers in Appendix B subdivision control and condominium division standards and Appendix C joint zoning ordinance. And three, Article five entitled MS four illicit discharges and connection program. In chapter forty six of the Michigan City Code is hereby repealed. And Article and Item four, which is Article nine entitled Stormwater Management Regulations is hereby created in chapter forty six. And so you re- and shall read as set forth in Exhibit A, which is attached here too and incorporated herein. And Item five, section fifty dash twenty six in chapter fifty, the Michigan City Code is hereby amended and now reads as section fifty dash twenty six fines for violation of stormwater management regulations. The fine requires the section forty six, three hundred and thirty six C should not be more than twenty five hundred dollars for each offense, plus cost damages and expenses. And the ordinance shall be en- uh enforced and effect after passage by the Michigan City City Council. So that is the ordinance? Are there any questions or comments from Mister Wallace about the ordinance?
I have to open this up for public comment.
Oh yeah, okay, well.
Are there, I'll open this up for public comment on this ordinance?
Yeah, Ernie Hallahan, Rio Group, out of the street. I, I'm glad he read all of that, because that's the problem with all these ordinances, you don't know the whole details of them. But this stormwater drainage thing, I, I've dealt with this thing for numerous years. In particular, Barker and Dewey. That one is completely plugged. And when it rains hard, it builds up in the street and then people blow the water up on the sidewalks. And out on Springland, right before two twelve, there's two of them. And it, if it rains real hard, it covers the whole road and it stays there for several days. And I have brought that to Mister Prebalinski's attention to the uh sanitation department. To no avail. There's, there's nothing been done about it, so hopefully this ordinance straightens that out, but there's other places around Michigan City that are, that are flooded because of the drains.
Thank you. Once again, public comments are open on this ordinance. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance? If there are no other public comments, public comments are now closed, any comments from the council, Councilman Colton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um first, I, I kinda wanna tease Don a bit, um he said it'd be a marathon meeting, and now I know why. Bit long to read, I loved it, um and then second, Madam Clerk, can you please add me as a sponsor? And then I have two questions for Mister Wallace. Um the first is that um you provided us a lot of helpful information about this that was really easy to go through. And it really introduced that we were mostly working from the Purdue Model Ordinance when we were putting this together. Um how much of what we see in this ordinance is from the Purdue Model Ordinance versus um what's, what's new?
Uh sure, uh Al Wallace with the Saniter, Sanitary District of Michigan City. Uh in the uh main packet of the stormwater regulate, uh recommendations binder, the final tab uh table of contents comparison. Uh that includes uh all of the table of contents items from the proposed stormwater ordinance. From the kinda introductory preamble through illicit discharge, storm work, hauntings, so on and so forth, so these are all of the table of content sections in the ordinance, so what we did was we compared the proposed Michigan City ordinance with the ordinances of La Porte, Portage, and Valparaiso. And what you can see with all the Xs identifying that those ordinance have the same uh almost exact wording, wording, and all of these uh are within the Purdue University Model Ordinance, so what we did was uh Purdue University gathered stormwater professionals, county surveyors from across the state over a period of about a year or so, uh put together the thoughts on how to uh come up with a comprehensive model for the state. Uh we took that and working with the district stormwater consultant at the time, Christopher Burke Engineering. We provided all of the current ordinances from two thousand and seven. And then they modified some of the model ordinance language to make it more consistent with how Michigan City has treated stormwater in the past. So we've uh, the current proposed ordinance follows the Purdue Model Ordinance very closely with some nuances here and there to tailor it specifically to the needs of Michigan City.
Thank you, um and then kind of building on that, um we've got the new ordinance, we've got tailored some of our old stuff into it, so what exactly is new besides just consolidating some of those old ordinances?
Uh the main uh new items uh kinda speak to, in the first half of the handout, we have a summary, a, a memo summary of why uh it's necessary to, to do this. Uh two main reasons, one, most of the current ordinances are approaching eighteen years old, so they're somewhat dated. Uh also, in twenty twenty one uh IDEM issued some new general permits, a general permit for how stormwater is managed in cities and a second general permit that uh controls how stormwater from construction sites is managed. And both of those new item permits from December twenty one include new regulations that must be followed locally that are not in the current ordinance. Um some speak to uh minimum requirements for post-construction uh stormwater detention, so there's new requirements on the state level that we had to implement here, so and in your board packet, we included um all of the current ordinance uh language that we're looking to repeal. Uh and if you read through those compared to the new proposed ordinance, there's a lot of similarities. But we're uh adding uh some of the new components such as post-construction detention requirements. Um having a trained individual from construction companies do weekly assessments. Uh so as the state kinda tightens their permit regulations, we've added those nuances to the current proposed ordinance.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Are there any other comments from the Count Councilman Chris Balinski? Councilman Beatry?
Very thorough, uh very heavy, in, in more than one way, uh I read through all this and um I don't know, I think when we write ordinances for developers or for the public, we, we should follow the smooth and easy path, so it's reader friendly and uh our, our developers and our public won't have any difficulty in meeting what they have to meet. And I talked to you about this earlier. This is, to me, is so prescriptive and directive and negative in many ways. It's almost like we're creating a minefield uh in a complicated maze. Then asking developers to struggle through it without getting blown up. I mean, uh it, there's a lot of restrictions in here, and a a lot of requirements that have to do this and this and this, and a lot of lengthy fines too, and some of I don't understand, like uh in section forty six, three twenty uh, in Section forty six, three twenty one, we're requiring that they provide a bond that's uh, worth a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of the work that was done. Why, why are we asking for a bond from them that's twenty-five percent more than what the thing cost in the first place? So it's, it's kind of example of what I'm saying. And I know when you talked to me, you said this is what's required in all the other cities. So I guess it's something we had to live with. But I'm going to have a soft spot in my heart for developers and the public who have to meet all the restrictions that are in this. And, um, I assume that we're going to be heading in this direction with sewers too and everything else.
Oh, well, these, if I could add a couple of comments to that, this is strictly applicable to stormwater drainage.
Right.
Whether it be, uh, storm sewers, uh, open swale conveyances, those kind of things. Um, and then with respect to that particular citation with a hundred and twenty-five percent bond on uh, uh, performance bond, maintenance bond on post-construction stormwater activity. So if we look around town, we may see some detention basins that may need some maintenance. So what we're trying to do move forward is, uh, in perpetuity, uh, just as all the other communities are doing, require those property owners to maintain those facilities. If they do not maintain the facilities and lose storage capacity in those basins, there's the potential to have localized flooding on adjacent properties. So, um, you know, looking at, uh, uh, again, that table in the back of the the handout with the code comparison with, uh, La Porte, uh, Long Beach, Valparaiso, um, La Porte approved their ordinance in August twenty twenty four, Long Beach approved their ordinance November twenty four, Chesterton, September twenty twenty four. And as we, as stormwater professionals across northern Indiana, across the state, meet at the state, uh, Stormwater Conference this year, there's a lot of discussion that, uh, with most of these entities adopting the Purdue Model, the designers and developers are now working at a level play on field. So whether they're developing in Michigan City, Chesterton, Valparaiso, La Porte, they're designing to the same standards, they're being held to the same requirements. So there's uniform standards now, so it should be, uh, easier for the engineering companies, design firms, and the builders moving forward because they're all designing towards the similar standards. So we're trying to, uh, unify stormwater drainage across the region, across the state, and that also, uh, we have to meet state requirements. And then effective July first this year, uh, the state passed, uh, a law, enacted a law that says local stormwater ordinances can be no more restrictive than what the state permits are. So there are protections for, uh, developers, um, to not be more restrictive than the state requirements.
Are there any other comments from the council? If there are no other council members, Belinsky?
Yeah, uh, Mister Wallace, I just want to thank you for the, uh, I'm going to say detailed reports that you and whoever your staff was put this information for the, uh, together for the city council. I mean, it's detailed to the detail, and I, I think it's very good information. Just so I have, uh, information, uh, you know, if anybody has questions as a reference as time goes on. But yeah, I appreciate that very much, uh, giving this to the council and giving us time to, uh, look at it. Thank you.
And if I could just respond real quickly. So, uh, part of that was uh, this is a very detailed, technical-based ordinance because we're dealing with stormwater issues. There's different types of rainfall events, different types of, uh, storm frequency we're designing. So there has to have a lot of detailed technical information. So in the summary, we just wanted to provide a, a context for the council. We want all council members to be comfortable with what we presented, to understand it. If there's any technical questions, going before the Plan Commission a few times earlier this year, uh, we offered, any plant commission can send questions to us via email. You can send them to my email. We'll address those. If any council member wants to sit down when I want to discuss it, we're available that way. Uh, we're not here to, to say this is the Bible, this is what has to be done, uh, which is the case, but we want you to be comfortable and provide you an opportunity to understand some of the engineering and technical reasons why we're doing this. We're open to meet, uh, any form or fashion you want to. Send us questions and we'll get those answered to you.
Thank you, Mister Wallace. This ordinance, if there are no other comments on the council, this ordinance will be held over for second reading. Madam Quacker, do we have any new business for this evening?
There is no new business. There is no unfinished business.
And that will move over down to comments from the council. That will open this up for comments from the council?
Sorry.
Comments from the council. Councilman Chris Belinsky?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam President. Uh, one thing that I would like to, uh, bring up, and I know it's been in the newspaper, they've taken a picture of it. You know, the Woodland Avenue Railroad Crossing is now closed. Uh, finally got CSX into town, uh, to fix that. And I just want to give a little bit of history and about that crossing, that I brought that crossing condition up to the, uh, Board of Works two and a half years ago. Uh, CSX made it into town last summer and worked on other crossings, but they didn't work on Woodland Ave, so they left that alone. Why, why? I don't, you know, nobody seems to know. But anyway, uh, jumped back on it this year and went to Board of Works meetings. I've attended quite a few Board of Works meetings trying to keep this out in the forefront and get this done. Uh, and so the CSX has, uh, agreed to come back and start working on what they are. So what I want to do is just thank, uh, Tim Warner, our city engineer, for being diligent, uh, making the phone calls to the right people and waking them up to get in town and get this done. And our Public Works Director, Wendy Vajin, uh, for assisting him also. And along with Woodland Ave, they're also going to make sure that the Buffalo Street Railroad Crossing, it's not as in bad dire shape, but there's some parts that are missing to it that need to be put back in place that actually caused a, uh, safety issue. And there's a pile of a hundred and fifty railroad ties, I think that have been sitting there for five years now, that they're going to finally get those removed out of the, uh, right, uh, uh, the side of the road. So yeah, I just want to thank, uh, those two folks for, uh, for getting that done. Uh, and also Councilwoman Lee, and this is in response to, uh, you know, the Sustainability Committee and giving out awards for LED lighting and those kind of things. So I know at Ames Field, talking to the new athletic director, there, those lights that are in Ames Field, and I was kind of surprised. I thought they were changed out and they were LED lights already. But they're still, they're the old vapor sodium lights. So before the season starts, they're going to be putting in LED lighting. So you might, you guys might want to consider giving their, that group an award, uh, also for, uh, for doing that. And, uh, I always like to end on a positive note. So there's a woman in Michigan City and Councilwoman Lee may know her, because when I went over there, she told me that she had met you. And her name's Tiffany Taylor. She's a woman with the, uh, bikes, taking bikes in. So what, what? And I'm not giving out phone numbers or addresses or anything like that. But what she does is she started this program this summer. And she, she, it's out on Facebook and she's taking donated bikes that if they're, if they're good, that's fine. If they need repairs, she'll find someone to repair them or she'll repair them herself. And then she just turns around and gives them to, uh, children that are in need of bikes. You don't have to pay a nickel or a dime or anything for these bikes. So yeah, I mean, when I heard of this and then my wife and I went over there, we took three bikes over there and I saw what she was doing. I was really, really amazed for somebody that's wanting to give that much of her time and you know, her family's time towards a project like that. And then also the bottom line is changing somebody's life, a little kid's life or a teenager, what have you, so they can enjoy summer with a bike or just have a bike and they can enjoy and get around in that respect. So I just wanted to bring, uh, that out also. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
Thank you. Um, and to follow up with, um, Councilman Priz Belinsky, if you're interested in seeing her Facebook page, it's called, uh, City Kids New Wave. Um, and she posted two days ago that she's already given out seventy bikes this summer. So it, I'm really excited about this program. I think this is great. It just comes from a genuine place. Um, and she is doing great things for the city, helping kids be healthy and active and get outside and away from screens. I think it's a wonderful program. So check it out.
And are there any other comments from the council?
I would just like to close out in, as a reminder, um, that a notice did go out that the Michigan City Common Council meeting for Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five at six thirty has been rescheduled to the place on Monday, August fourth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P M in the city council chambers at the Michigan City City Hall, one hundred East Michigan Boulevard, Michigan City, Indiana, four, six, three, six, zero. That also applies to the City Finance Committee meeting that has been changed from August fifth and will be held on August fourth at six P M as well in the city council chambers. And a reminder again from the Michigan City PD National Night Out, which would be Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty five, which is the reason why the council meeting from August fifth was changed to August fourth, so that the council members and the community can actually fulfill that whole evening, um, by participating if they choose, wish, so choose to do so. If, since there are no other comments from the council, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.